Ashley, we good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, welcome everyone to our second meeting of the night. If you weren't here for the first one at six, we had a special meeting about our comprehensive strategic plan. Of course, that'll be posted online. We also had our viewpoint video, and I will read it for those that weren't here. We presented our viewpoint discovery, Discover America Series, Hope Mills. The town collaborated with Viewpoint Project with host Dennis Quaid to showcase our wonderful town across the nation. And that video is now posted, or will be posted, for the public to view. We're proud of both of them. So that was a little bit about our six o'clock meeting, and now we're getting ready to get into our seven. Tonight, before I call the meeting to order, this will be our first meeting with the new audio and video equipment that's in our boardroom right now. Our first meeting was really good, and this meeting too. As you notice, we have a camera up here that's going to be taking shots of the audience. We have a camera that's also in the back that's going to be taking shots of the board. And hopefully, the video and the audio will be now much better for our public to watch our meetings. And if you haven't noticed, we've got a really nice screen over here that's really going to highlight a lot of the information for the citizens of the town. So this has been a major upgrade. It was part of this year's budget. We finally got it in. Now, we should have done it a few years ago, but we finally got to it. Other than that, I'm going to call a meeting to order. Please rise for the invocation from Pastor Billy Parker and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we come to you in the name of Jesus. Father, help us all to surrender ourselves more unto you, Father. But God, I ask that you guide each and every person in this room, Father, each and every person in this town, Father. Father, do you begin to move your Holy Spirit upon the leadership, Father, so that it dwindles down on the followers, Father? Father, I ask that you give us your wisdom and your knowledge, your guidance and your protection, Father. Father, don't let us be like Balaam and go on the path with the wrong heart. But Father, I ask that you reach into our hearts and change our hearts and make our hearts a heart after yours, Father. Father, we ask for your protection, your guidance and your comfort. Jesus, without you, we have nothing. Jesus, without you, we have nothing. And Father, without you, we definitely have nothing. Holy Spirit, have your way in this room tonight and in the hearts and the minds and the soul of each individual here, and touch our families. Have your hand and have your way tonight and forevermore. In the name of Jesus, we ask. And everyone say, "Amen."
Let the allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is item one, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add an item, if I could, under old business for discussion of the HPC and possible action.
HPC, you're going to add it under item six, old business. It will be item B, HPC with possible action.
Yes, sir.
This is an HPC request?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the addition.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition. Any further discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, Mayor Pro Tem Dr. McCray is an affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Dr. McCray is at home. She has joined our meeting by cellphone. You will hear her make her comments, and she will vote as well. Commissioner Legg is at home resting tonight, so he will not be with us. So to make sure we got everybody and where everybody is. All right, so the agenda's approved, official comments, manager's report. And before he starts, I want you to really look at this screen because there's a lot that he's going to put up here. Because we say this every, every week, there is so much to do in Hope Mills. Well, look up at the kickoff. Go ahead, Chancellor. Tell us what we're going to do this week.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome a lot of the people in our boardroom, as well as the audience on our live stream with the new software we have. In terms of the first page of the manager's report, we have the community corner. There's a lot of things going on, first of which is early voting began October 16th here in Hope Mills. On the manager's report's front page, you have the locations of the early voting sites. This weekend, we have the return of Old Mill Days, Saturday, October 25th, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. right here at Hope Mills on Nissip Park. We also have the next phase of our Elevate Hope Mills program, the Business Accelerator Program. This is taking place Saturday as well at the ELC from 11:00 to 1:00. This is something different because for this particular session, Secretary of State Elaine Marshall has joined in to do a roundtable discussion. She has a small business initiative statewide, but she's doing a roundtable discussion with local businesses on procurement readiness. October 28th, which is Tuesday next week, you have what we talked about at the strategic plan presentation, the Hope Mills Area Land Use Plan. There is a new website that has gone live. We've shared it on our social media page specifically dedicated to the Hope Mills Area Land Use Plan. On that, you can find out more about the community kickoff on Tuesday, the 28th, from noon to 7:00 in the Parks and Recreation Building, but you can also find out more about what land use planning is. This is tied to, a lot of people have been talking about how can we control the growth in Hope Mills by stimulating the economy but keeping the small-town character. This community kickoff is where we need your input to be able to help us, so we need the feedback from the community. You also have information on here about our new law enforcement bicycle program has returned. So you'll see a couple of cops on bicycles now to continue our community policing program. You have October events from police, Walk with a Cop coming up as well as Safety Day at Millstone, which just recently had. Trunk or Treat is coming up at Rockfish Elementary on Friday as well. And so there's a lot of information coming. Next page. Periodically, I will provide updates on some of the commercial development coming forward. If you've been near the food line off of Waldo's Beach, and you see the big piles of cleared debris near that food line at Harmony Hope Mills, that is Camden Commons. It's an 80-acre all-commercial development, and I think I can announce that the anchor tenant is a super target, not a regular target, a super target. You also see Planet Fitness is very close to opening in where the other interior Chaplain Park used to be. You have Habit Burger opening beside Chipotle, Caribou Coffee is close to opening. We're actually coordinating with the Chamber who is here as well on ribbon cuttings. Dirtbag Plaza just opened its first business that is beside Dirtbag Els. They have the Jersey Mike's that just opened, Barbecue Lab, which is a 6,000-square-foot sit-down barbecue restaurant that is under construction on the tail end. That'll be the anchor tenant there. And also, if you've been on Bullet Street, if you recall, we had the groundbreaking for the hive at Hope Mills. If you've been to that Haymont Park Food Truck Park, this is our version. Our version is better because we have a community center tied to ours where they'll be, they're dealing with Quirks, which is an organization that deals with special needs kids. They'll have free bike rentals, equipment rentals for kids that want to play football, things of that nature. So it's a community center, and it's a food truck park. That is under construction now. If you go to the next page, you see residential development, Valley End Phase Three just completed. Pembroke Subdivision is a new subdivision on the books off of Blackbridge Road. That's 77 single-family residential lots under construction. The One Apartments is off of Elk Road, just down the street from Jack Britt, I mean, not Jack Britt, from Southview. That is under construction slated for about 300 apartments. And Sweetwater just across the street from the one just completed their last single-family residential house of 75 units in that neighborhood. Next page, I did an entire page dedicated to the Golfie Road and Rockfish Road project. A lot of people talk about infrastructure, and I focus on infrastructure. A lot of times, we have the plans. I have plans for four more major roadway improvements in Hope Mills. So to the citizens, you may not think anything's happening. But I always say with this project, when you got that guy out there with the stop and slow sign, that's when the construction has started, but that's the ugliest part of it. But those two projects right here anchored at the corner of this complex are under construction. These are about two-year projects, so we need you to bear with us. But what you'll see at the end of this is four lanes for both roadways with medians in between. There's a roundabout at the intersection of Golfie and Rockfish and a roundabout to the entrance to the Parks and Rec facility. Working with Parks, Public Works Department, we're talking about making sure that utilities are buried, as well as the roundabouts having sculptures inside them. So that'll be a really, really nice project to anchor this complex. Go to the next page. Next page is our events for the summer and fall for Parks and Rec. You have the Trunk or Treat coming up this Friday. You have the Thanksgiving Luncheon in November. Letters to Santa, I know we're already talking about Christmas, we hadn't gotten Halloween yet, but they had Christmas stuff already. And Letters with Santa is a really, really cool program if you have kids, that they can actually, you can sign up and have your child put a letter in a Santa's mailbox that we're going to put out in front of Parks and Rec, and your child will get an official letter from Santa in the mail. And that's a really cool program. They, Parks and Rec unveiled a few years ago. Christmas Parade is set for Saturday, December 6, 5:00 p.m. Again, that's a night parade. We debuted those a few years ago. Those look amazing. Next page, we have Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce, a page dedicated directly to them. The Chamber Business Breakfast, the monthly luncheon, the next one is set for November 5th, 11:30 a.m. at the VFW. I think they're still taking chili cook-off applications. I hadn't entered, you know, I don't want to disparage anybody. I'm like the greatest cook on the planet, but I may get involved in that, I may not. But they have a putt-putt golf tournament that they're moving forward with, a Hollywood Glam Gala moving forward. All of these will be posted on the town's social media page. And customarily, the last two pages of the manager's report will remain dedicated to additional corridor and active NC DOT construction, project updates, Camden Road, Fisher Road, things of that nature. So you'll see these come off the books on this update when you see the construction in the field. But the two that are under construction now are Golfie and Rockfish. Get ready for Camden, because if you can visualize this, where that Walgreens is on Hope Mills and Camden Road, imagine four lanes with medians from there to 295. That's how big that project is. So it's a lot of projects. On these two pages, you're getting the verbiage. As they transition to starting construction, you'll start seeing photographs and things of that nature. But Mayor, that does, oh, before I go, because Greeley's going to kill me if I don't mention this, the VFW has just developed a partnership with our Parks and Rec Department for them to run senior events and programs out of the VFW off of Davis Street. So that's something that's new, and it ties to our dedication to our senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Before we get into board comments, I just wanted to highlight that last, that last statement that you said about the VFW on Davis Street. That was one of the tenants of the purchase of the building for the VFW. In fact, when we purchased it, because I was part of the VFW at that point, and I still am, lifetime member, was post commander at that time when we had the opportunity. That house was, that building was going to be sold by the town at that time, and the VFW stepped forward and offered the town a reimbursement for about $50,000 for what the monies that the town had put into the building. If you walk into the, to the, to the building, you'll see a picture there of former mayor Edwin Dever, because it was highlighted with him of the intent that going forward, that that building would continue. Key word here, and former Commissioner Greeley Mitchell sitting right here, he knows exactly what I'm about to say, will continue to offer spacing for our senior citizens, because our senior citizens were in that building for many, many, many years. And then a lot of the programs moved to the rec center. But that building has always been there to take care of our senior citizens, always. Somewhere along the line, things kind of went zig and zag, but nonetheless, full circle is now the building is back to where, to the original tenants of the purchase. And I'm proud to say that because I was part of that. And when the VFW purchased it, it was to make sure that our senior citizens had a dedicated space. Now, they're running bingo out of there too now. They're just starting bingo operations in the building. It's been in a couple tests over the past month or so, but nonetheless, it's, it's a home for our veterans, it's a home for our senior citizens, it's a home for our community. And that's, and that's the, the mission of the veterans of foreign wars. And I'm, I'm proud to be a lifetime member. Commissioner Joanne Scorola is a lifetime member as well, as long, as well with Greeley Mitchell, and I just wanted to highlight that piece. That's not part of my report, but I just wanted to touch on that before we go to board comments. I'm going to start with Commissioner Scorola.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's good to see everyone. It's always, it's always great to see people in the audience. I wanted to mention, coming up on Wednesday, I don't know if the mayor or if the town manager's going, we have the second meeting for the Fast Feasibility Study. So this is to try to get us some kind of public transportation. We had our first meeting about a month ago, so this is the second meeting. So we're still, we're working as hard as we could to try to see if we can get some mass transit in, into Hope Mills. And then also, I'd like to talk about chili cook-off. I'm going to compete this year versus eating all that chili, because I can't handle that, all that chili again, so I'd rather compete. So you guys are going to have some competitions. How many spots do we have left? Three? Three, three spots to compete. Two? Two spots to compete. So if you want to compete against me and my magically delicious chili, you know, you can see the chamber after this meeting or at any point. And then also, one thing, the town manager had mentioned about the hive, the reason why our food truck area is going to be better is because we have parking. Uh, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Scorola. Commissioner Marley?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have anything, just want to welcome everybody tonight, and especially welcome all our chamber members here tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Commissioner Craver?
I don't have anything to say other than it's good to see all of you, and I am so happy to hear that our seniors are going to be back over there at the VFW, because that's where they love to be. Can they use that every day, like to cook lunch like they used to, or how is that going to be?
We're in the process of working it out.
Okay. If, okay, if I can help, let me know. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. Mayor Pro Tem Dr. McCray?
Good evening, everyone. I have three things I would like to just remind everybody to exercise their right to vote, and I wanted to let you all know that I am viewing you on YouTube, but I'm on the phone with Mayor Bear Flowers, but the video looks really, really good. I'm not, I don't have the sound turned up, but I can see the feedback that it sounds much better, so that looks really well. And again, I wanted to explain my absence. I am not there because I cannot be there. I had pretty intense surgery on the opposite leg. As you all know, I had surgery on my right leg back in November, and so I had the opposite leg done a few weeks ago, so I will not be at the events, and I am not there because of that reason. But thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Dr. McCray. Before I get into my comments, I want to recognize some folks that we have here in the audience. Of course, the Chamber of Commerce is here, the backbone of our community. I'm so glad to see the Chamber is here tonight with us. School board member, our, our school board member, Dr. Tara Jordan, is here with us as well. Of course, I already recognized former Commissioner Greeley Mitchell is here, and most importantly, all the citizens that took the time to come to tonight's meeting and those that are streaming. I tell you, there was a moving event on Tuesday night. It was at Southview. It was a tribute game to honor three young men from EE Smith's football team. I get a little choked up because it was very emotional. It was a tribute game of spirit and comradeship at Southview, and I was so glad to be a part of it, along with both teams. To be on that field and to watch both teams come out of the tunnel together, arm in arm, it was really something. Cumberland County Schools Superintendent Dr. Bracy was there, along with the principal from EE Smith, and a very, and the school board was there, just about the complete school board was there. And that's what, that's who we are as a community, really, really is. And it was a touching, touching ceremony Tuesday night. I just wanted to highlight that piece. Early voting is going on. I encourage everyone to either early vote or wait till general election to vote, but nonetheless, please vote. Not every day you get an email, and I'm going to read some of it, from the office of Congressman David Rousher. And this just came today. And his aide said, "Good morning, mayors." That would be the nine of us in Cumberland County. "I look forward to seeing all of you on Wednesday," this is October 22nd, "at 9:30 at Fayette City Hall. The city of Fayette was kind enough to provide parking passes, and the space will be up on the third floor in the conference room. This will be an informal meeting. We will do a brief introductions. The congressman will give an update, and there will be a time for questions." It's not every day you get that opportunity to meet with the congressman, but as all of you know, I don't mind begging for money. They know it, and they know exactly what I'm coming to ask them for, and it's not for, you know, it's not for the moon and the stars, but it's for something to help our community and the quality of life and amenities of our community. Don't know if it's, if it's money-related, I hope it is, but anytime you have the opportunity, especially all of us, I mean, I don't think we've had this opportunity, just all the mayors, to meet together. Something's happening, we'll be there, and it's all about partnerships. So I'm looking forward to that one. Has anyone seen this nice booklet, this nice magazine called Milling Around? I think some of them are back there on the table. If not, they're over in the Parks and Rec. When I ask the question, "Why Hope Mills?", I can find it in publications just like this. We had some slides up here earlier of all the new residential businesses and the commercial businesses that are coming to Hope Mills. Why Hope Mills? It's because of our character, our small-town, our amenities, our quality of life. And now we've got Camden Commons and that huge field out there behind food line, Jason to Jack Britt. See all those piles out there like Chancellor was talking about? They're actively clearing that, that, all that land for a super target, and another anchor will come with them, or two. You've got the main anchor, which is Target, and then you have another anchor, and then there'll be a bunch of other stores that are going to come in, other businesses that'll be coming in. That's a hallmark. They could have, they could have built that anywhere, just like the Wawa Travel Center, just like Culvers, and so many more of our businesses. Planet Fitness, I've been a member of Planet Fitness since they opened Scavo, so you know I'm going to be there at Planet Fitness. I go to the one at Scavo. Why Hope Mills? Why us? And I think that's the strength of all of us collectively, that we are Hope Mills, and we welcome every business and every resident that wants to come to Hope Mills. We do, we truly do. So those are my comments for tonight. I'm going to go into presentations. Oh, wait a minute, one, one other one. I think Chancellor got it earlier about Friday's Trunk or Treat, and then Saturday is Old Mills Day. And I wanted to back up, I forgot one. If you didn't go to the Artist Village Mystery Dinner, and there were, and two of them were last week, we were, Commissioner Scorola and myself were at the first one on Friday night, along with Karen, you missed, you really missed a great play. So there's two more coming. If you don't have a ticket, you won't get one sold out. There, it's that good, and that showcases, in the video, you saw some Artist Village, we are the arts. And when you've got productions that sell out that quick, and it's really good too, it's, it's really, and I'm, and I'm, they're not paying me to say this, it's because it is that good.
And the food's from La Patrona.
Yes, and the food was excellent from La Patrona. And, you know, we haven't had that opportunity to partner with a local business for one of the plays, so that was really, really great. The next one's coming up is the Magi. That's going to be at, at VFW, at the VFW building. That's going to be in December. That'll be the next production from Artist Village. All right, Don, I'm done. Now it's your turn. Under Presentations, item 3A, it's Asphalt Replacement Proposal, Bretton Woods. There are no attachments, because Don has the attachments.
Okay. Mayor Board, simple presentation. As y'all are aware, that we have done a couple asphalt projects in the past year. We did the major repair on Dever Circle. What you may not be aware of is we did asphalt rejuvenation in all of our roads that were less than 10 years old, so we did that for a little over 72,000 square yards. And now we're positioned to do a major rehab project. We are going to do Bretton Woods from Hackberry to Valley End. We're working on the RFP right now. We selected that because it's a major, major residential road that feeds a large portion of our population, and with future development, that's going to be a significant access point to Camden Road. As far as funding goes, we've been banking our power bill monies. We've got a significant reserve now, so we're not going to be needing any general fund monies for that. We've already got the money in the bank. It is going to be painful, because it's a significant residential road, but it needs to be replaced. We are literally going to tear up the asphalt from gutter pan to gutter pan, rehab the base course, and put a whole new asphalt lift on it. So we'll have essentially a new road in place when it's all done, you know, so it's going to be painful, but we'll do our best to coordinate with the residents and the contractor and make it as easy as possible. And finally, we're just bringing this to you for information. We're not actually looking for any action, but we're available for questions, should you have any.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead. Commissioner Scorola?
When, when does this start, and when is the anticipation?
We're just working on their RFP right now. We're still gathering some data on that.
Okay.
But we, the- But we, the, the big thing was, we, we banked enough money that our estimate will be able to cover it.
Awesome, okay. So, as soon as we get the information, I'm sure the town manager will push it out, so everyone's aware.
You will get the contracts and stuff like that.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just thank you, Don.
Yes, ma'am.
Don, I don't know, I don't think there's a week that goes by that someone doesn't thank us for what happened at Dever Circle. That road, and I mean, we completed a lot of projects and initiatives over the past two years, I mean, a long list of them, and we've got a long list that's in play now, but one of the hallmarks was fixing that road, because that road is used and connects to over 2,000 Hope Mills residents that use that road every day. And before it was, it was repaired, it had potholes in it, it was washed out, cars were breaking axles, it was, it was a safety hazard, it truly was. But being proactive, and, and Don, you were behind it along with Bruce, the entire town staff, being proactive and finding the funding to fix that, that has really, really benefited, and I just wanted to, to echo that, that a lot of folks thank us for, for what, for the repairs that were done to Dever Circle. They really, really do. I just wanted to share that, Don.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is item four, Public Comments. We have three public comments. Anybody else? Not too late to sign up. One, once, twice, okay. Each speaker is required to state the name and address. Limit comments to three minutes. Total comment period will be 30 minutes or less. Speakers should avoid repetition, and groups should designate a spokesperson. Citizens should have signed up with the town clerk, which they have, to speak prior to the start of the meeting, which they have. Please direct comments to the full board, not to an individual board member or staff member. I'm gonna say that one more time. Please direct comments to the full board and not to one individual board member or staff member. Although the board is interested in hearing your concerns, speakers should not expect board action or deliberation on subject matter brought up during the public comment segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda item, and we have done that a number of times. We have placed a lot of, a lot of different items on the agenda directly from public comments, and sometimes, like we did in the last meeting, we just take action right there and, right then and there, like, like we did with the gate over at the former golf course, and Ron Gosniak, which is the speaker tonight, spoke about that gate, and we took action. So, our first speaker is Irene Grimes. She comes bearing copies.
You gotta be prepared, right? So, um, my name is Irene Grimes, my address is on file, um, I live here in Hope Mills, and, um, I wanna talk to you about, um, the fact that my husband and I own a couple properties on University Avenue, which is a very small street right off of Camden Road. The section of Camden Road you just referenced, um, that is going to be widened. All of these properties are, have relied on private wells and septic systems that are now several decades old. When we started settling there 25 years ago, those wells and septic tanks existed then, so you can just imagine how old they are. I've provided a map showing our location. Our side of the street is highlighted in yellow and is in the county, and the other side of the street in orange is in, within the city limits of Hope Mills, within the town limits of Hope Mills. Our neighbor on the corner of Camden and University has public utilities, so he has PWC water and sewer. That, that corner is 224 feet away from us, so less than, a little bit more than half a football field. Across the street from us was a wooded area, and there is now a plan, that's the plan that I gave you, that there will be 12 to 16 condominiums built. The zoning for those condominiums requires that public sewer and water be brought in by the developer. To be clear, our beef is not with the developer, right? They own the piece of land, they can do with it whatever they wish. Our concern is with PWC. We have for several years now inquired about getting connected to public utilities, and as late as last Friday, have been told that there is no plans for us to get water and sewer. Meanwhile, our septic tanks and our wells are aging, requiring more and more frequent maintenance, and will eventually fail, that's just the nature of septic tanks and wells. It, we think that it's simply not fair that one side of the street will have public utilities and the other side of the street will not, right? I remember recently saying that a developer deserves a voice in what happens, but so do I, right, as a, as a homeowner. So beyond fairness, there are also legitimate public health, safety, and environmental concerns that come with aging private systems in a, in a really very well-developed corridor. Connecting our properties to public water and sewer would not only improve reliability and quality of life, but also promote long-term sustainability and responsible growth, which is something you all advocate for. We respectfully ask for your guidance and support in moving this issue forward, and I will shut up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Irene.
I apologize about my voice.
Chancellor, how could we address this?
Um, I asked on Mariana, I did speak at length with Mrs. Grimes, and at our recent plan review last week, I did speak very briefly with PWC. And so what typically happens is, for this development, the water and sewer will be extended down this road by the developer for his piece. Mrs. Grimes is talking about whether or not PWC has plans on connecting her side through their services, and so I'm trying to set up a meeting between them and, uh, her and PWC, but they are aware of it. I think she did send an email to them, and I did follow up, so I hadn't been able to get any specific answers, but we have been in engagement with Mrs. Grimes and PWC about the issue. I think where her, um, challenge comes in is who basically is responsible for the tap into the line that comes down for the residents on her side. I do know if you recall the Big Bang that happened from Fayetteville about 15 years ago, typically, and that was to everybody's education, that was what stopped forced annexation in the entire state of North Carolina, but when you do that from a municipal standpoint, you're required as a municipality to extend the water and provide that service to the residents on the municipal's dime. I think what PWC is saying is they don't have anything on their books to do it on their end. We're trying to find out what we can do from a municipal standpoint to find some kind of middle ground between her and PWC. Like she said, I don't think the beef is with the developer, but you do have residents all down that street that have to look at someone tying in across the street, and so conversations, um, we're trying to see what we can do to broker some kind of conversation discussion.
Thank you, Chancellor. The, the reason I ask that is because I know during plan review on Thursday, we typically have a representative from PWC here, so maybe that would be the opportunity for Irene to, to meet with them at that point.
They were, they were there briefly on, uh, virtual, and so we couldn't actually get real heavy into the conversation, but they are aware of the issue and that we're trying to work through it with them. I'm on her behalf.
Commissioner Skorola.
Thank you, Mayor. Isn't, now, we may or may not have this answer, and I'd probably have to ask county, but didn't the county recently discuss something because of the PFAS and stuff? Aren't they doing something because of that issue that, is there like funding or something that maybe?
I'm not sure of funding. I do know with the PFAS and stuff like that, um, they were, there, there was an update that initially, and all this stuff gets technical in terms of the amount of parts per million that is allowed from the state and things of that nature, but at one point, it was said that the entire Grace Creek area was affected, but I think they updated it and realized that underground water in this area is affected, which is tied to what she's talking about, well water. If you're on PWC water, you're fine. It's if you're not on PWC water, that you may be at risk. So I'm not aware of any grant funding or anything, but that could be some, a part of the conversation we do have with PWC.
And that would be, you know, if, uh, if you can get a point of contact, or if we maybe have to have some kind of sit-down just to figure this out, because if they're talking about Grace Creek in our area, because I remember how they, they expanded it because of this stuff.
Yeah, that's correct.
I mean, there we go, this is, you know, affects us directly, so, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, what, what the town manager just said is more information than we have gotten in the past five months, so I appreciate it.
Well, you know, Irene, and, and all the citizens, it's about partnerships. It, it really is, it's about open dialogue, uh, it, it's about asking the questions and coming together to, to work through and find the right solutions. As that area continues to develop, and, and it will continue to develop, this is the time to establish those partnerships, those relationships, because they're gonna benefit the commercial, but they also need to benefit the residential, residents like yourself, who have lived in that area for a number of years. And one of the strengths that we have is their planning review committee that meets every Thursday. One of the hallmarks of what the, the town staff is doing right now to manage smart growth in, in the Hope Mills community, and I think that, and one of the next ones coming up, if, if possible, to have, uh, the PWC rep physically be here, and maybe Irene, you can meet with them and facilitate that kind of, that meeting.
That's the goal, um, either that or just set up a private meeting specifically between her and them, um, and, and from my standpoint, you just gotta have a little empathy. We don't own the system, but we can serve as a go-between to be able to address, uh, the needs of citizens in our area, so that's something we can definitely do for sure.
And PWC, it's not an evil organization. They, they just, if they don't know, if you don't know what you don't know, uh, and that's why I'm glad the residents speak up, because these are, these are issues that we can negotiate and facilitate in meetings to, to solve it. Commissioner Skorola.
So I actually found, um, it was by City View, uh, it was an article, so Cumberland County get 34 million to reduce PFAS and drinking water, and talks about extending public water to Grace Creek, so I don't see why it wouldn't apply for us, too, so we'll, something we'll look into.
Well, you know, you know how I feel about, about clean water, it's, it's not a municipality issue, it's a regional issue. It is completely county-wide. Commissioner Craver?
I know years ago, when the town annexed through Cumberland Road, we laid the water and sewer lines, uh, and the homes along there, uh, we gave them like five years to pay for the tap onto that. Now, I don't know if PWC will do that, I certainly think that she needs the water and sewer, any way we can help her get it, but that's how it worked years ago, but if we could get PWC to go in with us, and maybe we could do that again.
Okay. Usually we don't comment like, as much as we did, but, you know, these are important issues. Uh, Mr. Ron Gosniak?
I got a few seconds before you start that clock.
Welcome, sir.
Hey, how you doing?
All right.
Just a few seconds, just to refresh everybody.
Go ahead.
So, sorry, and I forgot my readers, I had to borrow these ones. So I just wanted to remind you guys, on April of 2025, I brought up a concern on how the lawn was being cut at the golf course, I informed the board, the contractor was not cutting the entire golf course, large sections were not being cut. I then asked how the contractor gets paid, I believe it was the Parks and Rec Director, the state of the contractor turns in his invoice, and then we pay him. I then asked, does the town inspect his work? Parks and Rec's director replied, yes. After we receive his invoice, we inspect, and if all is good, we pay him. And at that time, that sounded like a great plan, that, you know, solid plan, so. I'm Ron Gosniak, 4364 Dominic Street, Hope Mills, North Carolina, 28348. I submitted two public records requests, one in August 2025 and the other one in October 2025. I want to start by saying this, Mrs. Wyatt did an excellent, Mrs. Wyatt did an excellent job providing those, uh, records in a promptly time. My goal was to better understand how the lawn cutting at the golf course is handled per the contract. Due to the fact that large areas of the contract are not being cut, he would skip large areas and mow them the following, uh, time, and then skip other large areas, and next time he'd cut that. The practice continued the entire spring and summer. The first public request I submitted, I requested for all electronic communications to include invoices and records of payments from 1 January 2025 through August 8th of 2025. The only information was two emails, one from 2023 and one from 20, August of 2025. One was about a phone number, the other one was about equipment issues, and at that time, the contractor, and this was August 2025, the contractor had not submitted any invoices and no payments had been made to the contractor. I decided to wait till the end of the fiscal year to submit my second request. I don't know how the guy operates, I don't know if he's going fiscal or yearly. In my second request, I requested the contract invoices and records of payment, and I found something I wasn't even looking for. That wasn't, this is not even my concern. The contract clearly states a rate of $1,300 per cut twice a month, which is $2,600 a month. However, the contractor billed the town $2,800 a month from April through August of 2025, an overcharge of $1,000. These invoices, these, those invoices were approved and paid, meaning a check for $14,000 was issued when only $13,000 was owed per the contract. This information alone should concern the board of commissioners and the citizens of Hope Mills. It raises serious questions about oversight, accountability, and financial controls. If the contractor is being paid more than what is signed, what the signed contract allows, and those payments are being approved without question, that's not a clerical error, that is fraud, embezzlement, and corruption. And that leads to even a bigger question. Is this, is this happening with the other con, with other contracts? How many others are being ignored, overbilled, or rubber stamped without review? Who else is profiting off the taxpayers of Hope Mills? Taxpayers deserve better, the contract needs to be terminated, terminated immediately. We need an immediate review of all active contracts, title, oversight, and accountability for those responsible for approving improper payments. Every dollar matters, every dollar matters, and every citizen has worked hard and made sacrifices to make sure they pay their taxes. We deserve to know that our money is not, we, the citizens, deserve to know that our money is being protected, and as I stated in the last, uh, BOC meeting, I expect nothing but excellence after Hope Mills doubled my taxes, nothing but excellence. I printed off copies for this, if you guys would like to, everything's in order for
Thank you, Ron.
Yep.
Appreciate the copies, appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Chancellor, can we address this at our next board meeting?
Sure, I'll follow Parks and Rec first thing tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Again, thanks, Ron. Rod. Our next speaker is Dr. Tara Jordan.
I stand here before you as a, not just as a school board member, but as a representative, as a, as a Hope Mills, uh, person, uh, representative of our state. The reason why I come before the board today is because I have been, uh, listening to the election process, uh, here at Hope Mills, and, uh, as a resident, I am very, very, uh, it's very discerning, um, the rhetoric, the, uh, the misinformation that has been going out, uh, from some of our board members, and not just the board members, but the people that are running for commissioners and for the mayor. As a resident, I take this very serious, uh, I love the- Uh, I love the town of Hope Mills, I've been here for a while, and as we move forward, we have to be transparent. And as we're being transparent, we have to make sure that we, as a committee, and as you standing before, the people are going and making sure that you are fact-checking everything that you say that comes out of your mouth. Uh, I know how it is to be standing in front of somebody and talking and things like that, and so, but when you're standing there and you're saying things that are not true, uh, and I know that they're not true, uh, it is very discerning. Um, I'm just asking, as you move forward, as you are, you know, going for reelection, an election for the people who are running, to please, please, make sure that your information that you're talking about is true. And if you don't know it's true, or if you have no idea, uh, say I'll get back to you. Uh, see, please let me, let me fact-check that, let me do something. Uh, and the one thing that I wanted to say, as a, I'm not speaking for the board, but as our SROs are standing here today, um, just to let people know, the town of Hope Mills, the Fayetteville, and Spring Lake do not pay for our SROs and our school builders. I do not speak for the board, this is transparent, this is public information. Uh, the information that goes out for, uh, the traffic controllers and things like that, that information is public knowledge. And the second thing, when you're talking about people that are in positions that are in your building, uh, it is very discerning to me. So I just wanted to let people know that, please, please, as you're running, please be mindful of what you're seeing and what you're doing. To Mayor Pro Tem, much prayers. To Ms. Squirrel, I want to say thank you, because I have been watching you online, go back and, and, uh, debate some of this information, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Dr. Jordan, again, thank you for, for Tuesday. It was really touching, and you, and you know, because you were there. That's who we are as a community. I just wish more and more of our community members could come together just like that on a field of unity. Okay, that's it for, uh, public comments. Item five is consent agenda. We have items A, B, C, and D. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If none, I call for the vote. Dr. McCray?
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda is approved as presented. That's the end of the consent agenda. We go to item six, which is old business, item A correction of budget amendment number six for the police department in the amount of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, that's under tab five.
Okay, the budget amendment that you approved at the last meeting showed that the funds would be coming from the asset forfeiture monies. For that one, there was just a, uh, communication issue between myself and the, um, police chief, and that money should have come from, uh, fund balance.
Okay.
If you remember last budget year, when we approved the funding for the, um, new server, all those funds came out of fund balance, so we're just using the same place to use the funding for this. This is, uh, extra things needed for the server system. So we're just changing it from, it's still budget amendment number six, but instead of using asset forfeiture funds, we're using fund balance reserves.
My question would be, do we need to re-vote on this, or is this informational?
Yeah, just to prove it like it's a new one, but.
Okay, do we have a motion?
The other one.
To approve item A correction of budget amendment number six for police department in amount of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I just have a question for the board.
Okay. Commissioner Squirrel?
What is the reason why it's going from asset forfeiture to the fund balance?
I was under the assumption that that's what the police chief wanted to use to pay for this.
Okay.
But after it was approved, he thought, wait a minute, why did we use asset forfeiture? I said, I thought that's where you wanted it to come from. He said, no, that needs to come from fund balance, just like it did last year when they approved the other server expenditures. So we're just shifting the funding source from one to the other.
Okay, so it's.
The amount has not changed.
So when they approved the, this is to get the server up and running?
Mm-hmm.
And we're like ninety-five percent there?
Mm-hmm.
The problem is, is that some of the central squares, the stuff that Central Square needed to finish that project, and, uh, and the, and the licenses that they needed to finish that, that's, that's what this is. It, it has nothing to do with.
Okay.
What, this was just, they were just short in their estimate on what, what it was going to require with different licenses and, and stuff like that.
Okay.
Okay.
This is all to get the server up and running.
Okay. Just changing one funding, funding source to another, that's all we're doing. Okay, you have a motion? To approve item A correction of budget amendment number six for the police department in the amount of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray, uh, votes in the affirmative, motion passes. Item B, uh, which was added to the agenda, is a HPC, uh, request and possible action, and Commissioner Marley has that one.
Thank you, Mayor. At the, uh, HPC meeting, um, Wednesday night, um, they had a discussion on their budget. They had some concerns about their budget, and, uh, back there in budget time, uh, when we were, um, discussing committee budgets, um, I understood it to be, they would get their budget, and we would, um, be approving the chapel designation, uh, which we did several meetings back. They have a couple of, um, projects, and y'all should have a copy of this as well. You know, I'll get you a copy. So what, so what they're asking for, what they asked me to bring to the board as the liaison, is they have several, um, annual costs, um, that they are looking to get funding for. So what they're basically asking for is two thousand six hundred dollars, um, and there's a spreadsheet you have that has everything listed, what that money goes for. Um, basically it's for the chapel holiday, open house they do with the, uh, festival lots, um, and they got Charter Day coming up, um, they do a lot of printing and advertising, uh, for Charter Day as well. But if you have any questions, uh, Ms. Serison's here, she's the, um, co-chair for the HPC, Ms. Reeves couldn't be here tonight, so, um, if y'all have any questions for her about it, she can answer that for you. Okay, and, and, uh, town manager can speak to it as well.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Chancellor, you want to add something before we?
Um, if you guys recall, uh, I think two board meetings ago, we approved a contract from HPC to, uh, do a nomination of Thomas Oakman Chapel. That contract pretty much, uh, all that expenditure wiped out the entire fiscal year allocation. And so what Commissioner Marley, who's the liaison, was talking about is, there was a thought process at the budget workshops, that when they actually talked about this expenditure, that this would be in addition to the five thousand, but the way we did the motion, we didn't do it that way. So that expenditure we just approved about two meetings ago pretty much wiped out their entire fiscal year allocation. So what they're doing tonight is just presenting the rest of the year's activities, which amount to a little over two thousand dollars, they're just asking for that to be funded so that they can continue the other activities that they wanted to do before the end of, uh, June thirty of twenty twenty-six.
Yes, sir, and that'll, that'll take them through the end of the budget year.
Thank you, Chancellor. Uh, Commissioner Marley, thank you. I do remember during the workshops, each one of the committees presented their, uh, their budgets, request for the year, uh, and I believe that, uh, everyone on the, on the board should know that the HPC had a pretty well-detailed budget request for the year. Uh, to, to include all these items, uh, including the, uh, six thousand for the landmark designation. Um, so that was part of, part of the, uh, HPC's budget. So what they're asking for tonight is just the remainder, uh, remainder funding items of the original budget that was proposed by them back in the workshops, and I believe this board actually approved that during the workshop.
We, we, uh, town attorney and I looked at the minutes, it wasn't explicitly outlined as a eight thousand dollar allocation, which is why we told them we processed the initial expenditure for the, uh, consultant, but when they had, um, a request for the additional activity just to come back, and that's what they're doing now. But like you said, Mayor, this is just the remaining amount of what they did talk about, but when we did the approval, we only approved them for the five thousand allocation, uh, for their committee funds.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, grant the HPC the two thousand six hundred dollars that they are proposing to get them through the end of the budget year.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have any further discussion?
Yeah, just to read it out, so everyone's a little transparent. So I'll, I'll, just so everyone's tracking what it says, so we have a piano inside the chapel, and the piano definitely needs tuning to keep it, you know, usable. So piano tuning, um, five hundred dollars, um, historic district projects, five hundred dollars, chapel holiday open house, a hundred dollars, chapel holiday accessories, five hundred, Charter Day, um, including printing, advertising, mementos, et cetera, um, eight hundred dollars. And for the Charter Day advent, uh, advertisement stipend reimbursement, expense reimbursement, two hundred. So it's nothing exorbitant, you know, it's nothing, um, ridiculous or anything like that, so that's it.
Okay. All in favor? Mayor Pro Tem votes affirmative, motion passes. Under new business, uh, item seven is new business, item A is the Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce proposal. There are no attachments, I believe this will be, uh, some type of proposal by the chamber. Please come forward and welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone, Mayor and Board, and everyone in here. Um, on behalf of the Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce, I am respectfully requesting the formation of a committee within the town that serve as a dedicated platform for strengthening the ongoing partnership between the Hope Mills Chamber and the business community. This request is rooted in the strong collaborations we've already built together through initiatives such as Hope, um, Elevate Hope Mills, Old Mills Day, um, ribbon cuttings, our grant openings, town hall meetings, and letters of recommendation in support of grant funding. These efforts have laid the groundwork for long-term economic development and community engagement. As we move forward, we believe this committee will provide the structure needed to strengthen communication between the chamber and the town, stabilize the plan for long-term financial stability, sustainability, advocate for and connect local businesses to vital resources, strategically support community events, and develop, development initiatives, um, continue to build a unified voice to elevate Hope Mills as we're thriving to that destination, and also to, um, ensure that we have a strong collaboration and transparency, we are opening two ex officiate seats on this committee. We are requesting not only for your approval, um, to form this committee, but also your financial support through the traditional funding amount typically allotted to committees. At this stage, we simply cannot move forward effectively without this assistance. These funds are essentially to main, to maintaining the infrastructure needed, whether it's for outreach, planning, administrating, administration, or support services to benefit our local businesses and the community as a whole. We are committed to using every dollar responsibly and with purpose, ensuring it supports the long-term interests of both the town and the chamber. With your support, we can build something sustainable that drives real results for Hope Mills. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and continued partnership. We look forward to this opportunity to work more closely together in servicing our goals that we share together. Thank you.
So the request is, let me make sure that I got it right, because I'm sure Chancellor's going to add. You're looking at, you're requesting a town committee.
So a partnership with the town, so forming a committee, the Hope Mills Chamber partnering with you all as a committee.
So initially, um, the chamber, if you, uh, it, it, to everybody's information, we do support a lot of the chamber events, um, we attend the business breakfast, uh, on behalf of the town, we attend the, um, chamber luncheons every month on behalf of the town, um, we do a significant amount of coordination, coordinating with them to help them set up ribbon cuttings and things of that nature. And so we had talked about them becoming a committee, uh, for some time, um, but it wasn't until they recently requested, uh, some of the financial assistance, because a lot of the grants that we actually have applied for, like the party grants and things of nature, we're getting letters of support from the chamber. And so, um, the idea was that instead of them asking for a couple thousand dollars for this request, I think would be, this would be the perfect time to have the conversation about if they were officially approved as a committee, they would get the typical five thousand dollar allocation annually on behalf of the town. I think some of the activities would, uh, go towards, if we talk of my ribbon cutting, there's expenses that you have to purchase that, I guess the chamber would be, uh, utilizing to spice up that ribbon cutting and things of that nature. And so because the five thousand allocation is typically what we do with all committees, I do think that that would have been another phase of support from the town, um, to take this relationship to a higher level, but not in the sense of that, uh, in the sense that it would be a significant financial undertaking, so it's not like they're asking for twenty, thirty thousand dollars. I do think that allocation that we typically give most committees would be nominal, uh, enough for us to be able to say that this could be considered, uh, continuation of the partnership that we currently have. Or at least that was the thought process.
Commissioner Squirrel?
I think due to the fact that I'm currently a board member on the chamber, I would like to recuse myself from any dis, um, deliberation discussion, what have you.
Okay.
Um, I don't think this is something that we could actually approve tonight until we get together and come up with a plan, and then maybe the board can do that, but I'm not willing to vote for it tonight until I know more about if the town citizens are going to be part of it, and the, and the chamber's going to have members on that, like a combined committee. And, um, I mean, I don't see any problem with it, but, um, I, I just can't vote on that tonight until we can set some, that I know more about it, what you want.
Okay.
Thank you. I think, Commissioner Marley?
So, um, I think it's, I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great proposal. I look at it as an investment in our businesses, our local businesses, and, um, I think that's worthwhile. And I was just going to say, I mean, ultimately it's up to you, Mayor, whether you, because you, you ultimately form, are responsible for the formation of committees within the town, so if, if this is something that you choose to do, I, I do support it if you choose to do a committee, and, you know, like I said, I think it's a great investment, so I would be in favor of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Here's what I'd like to see the chamber do, I think this is a joint committee, correct, between the town and, and their chamber. I think that's the formation. I'd like to see, uh, a proposal and the makeup of a committee, pretty much like we formed a new committee, uh, earlier this year. Has it been a year? Yeah, it's been over a year, our Economic Development Committee.
Right.
And that has really served us very, very well. Could, could the chamber bring back something along those lines in a proposal? Could, could the chamber bring back something along those lines in a proposal of, of, of the scope of what the committee, the vision of it, the mission, and what the makeup will look like?
Absolutely.
And I, and I ask you for that, and then we'll look at our next, if, if you can bring it back for our next meeting, which is in November, uh, then it'd be an opportunity for further discussion.
Okay.
But I agree with, uh, Commissioner Marley, I think it's an investment. Our, our businesses are investing in our community.
And Mayor, if I can add, uh, I think the best thing that we could do is work with the chamber and to materialize what you're talking about would be the creation of bylaws. Uh, every committee we has has bylaws. The bylaws outline the makeup of the committee, it outlines the terms of the committee, and it outlines the mission statements for it. So I do think a lot of the questions that Commissioner Craver and Mayor are asking, that could, those things can be answered in the materialization of, uh, a set of bylaws that would outline this partnership, and we can work with the chamber to develop that.
And we're more than happy to provide copies of existing committees, as it's all public record. But look at, uh, look at our Economic Development, uh, committee, because we just put that one together, and that has an excellent set of bylaws.
So I'm on that committee, and I could, I guess, just get access to that.
Yeah, and you, yeah, and Chancellor will give you that, and you're on the committee as well, uh, as a community partner, you know, uh, from the Chamber of Commerce. So let's, let's start there, and let's see what the proposal looks like.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yes, thank you.
Next item is item B, consideration and approval of budget amendment number eight for the Police Department in the amount of three thousand eight hundred dollars. That's under tab six. All right, Chief, come on up here. We want to make sure we get this one right.
Oh, this one is for that. This one, I have the email to support it.
Which one is this?
This was for the...
Oh, it's for bulletproof vests for, for some officers.
Okay.
And they are using the asset forfeiture.
Okay. Just want to make sure we got this one right.
That's what we want to use those funds for, to, to buy equipment and stuff like that. The server thing was a whole different project, that's...
Gotcha.
Yeah, this is for bulletproof vests for, uh...
Yeah, bring, bring a little humor to, to, to the issues. That's the reason why. Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve budget amendment number eight for thirty-eight hundred dollars to cover associated costs and the funds to be allocated from the asset forfeiture account.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray votes in the affirmative, the motion passes. Next item is C, removal of Cynthia Hamilton, Ronnie McCormick, Vivian Scott, and Roland Starling from the Town Veteran Affairs Committee. There are no attachments. And Commissioner Skorola is the liaison for that committee, so she will address this one.
So this is just for, wow, that was loud. Um, this is just for clarification issues, um, so because we're gonna start the committee over completely, um, when we say removal, it's, it's not like they're getting directly kicked off, they just have to resubmit their applications if they choose so. So essentially the motion, um, would be for the removal of, um, the current members, um, item C, so motion to approve item C. What is that?
I'm asking Commissioner Skorola to read from our, our rules of procedure, rule number thirty-nine, committees and boards.
Should I just put that somewhere? Here we go.
Rule number thirty-nine, I'm sorry, rule thirty-nine, um, G, I think covers that?
Rule number thirty-nine G says, uh, "All members of all boards and commissions shall, unless in conflict with state statutes, serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners, regardless of the terms for which they are appointed." I wanted to read that into the record, because there had been some discussion back and forth about the, about this committee and the removal process of members from our boards and, uh, from our committees and commissions. So that's why I wanted to make sure that that was read into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's just, uh, it's miss, essentially an administrative action, just to start everyone over, start the committee over from start, uh, from scratch. So I, motion to approve item C under new business.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? You got any?
No.
No? Okay. See no further discussion? All in favor? Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray votes in the affirmative, motion carries. Uh, item D, nomination and appointment of Charlie Grimes to the Veterans Affairs Committee, that's under tab seven. Commissioner Skorola has that.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, let me get to my, sorry, is my computer restarted? Uh, standby. So we got the application, um, for Mr. Grimes. Uh, let's see. Trying to scroll here. He's not currently serving on any other boards. Um, he's served on a committee before, um, let's see, twenty-seven years military experience, um, and he's requesting to join the Veterans Affairs Committee, so I make a motion that we approve, uh, the nomination and appointment of Charlie Grimes to the Veterans Affairs Committee.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray votes in the affirmative, motion carries. Yes, you may.
Um, actually, did you receive, um, an application for the homeless from Royal Soleil?
Um, no, ma'am, this is the only application that I've received recently.
When did you send it in, Royal?
Um, a few days ago. It shows in my portal that it was intended.
Oh, well, if it was after the packet was created, I probably just haven't checked yet, because this was, um, distributed last week, so I usually only check it when I'm putting the packets together.
Okay, well, continue to come to our meetings, and maybe at our next meeting we can get y'all. Thank you.
We have a vacancy, correct?
Yes, well, we will, after we let, uh, after we moved Lori Hudson, she's in Germany for two months, and...
Okay, so we will have a...
We'll have all that.
So we'll entertain this request at our November, I think, third meeting, right?
Um, well, that would be a point of clarification. The last time we discussed November third, we were just doing ceremonial items because it was the night before the election, and that we were moving business items to the November seventeenth. But obviously that's at the pleasure of the board, so if that's changed, just let me know.
Since you've already sent your, your packet in, let's make that exception and add her to the agenda on November third.
Can we edit consent? Can we edit consent agenda? Edit to the consent agenda?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we can do that, since you've already sent it in, and there is, and there will be a vacancy. That'll be, that'll be an easy, an easy agenda item. Okay, that's it for, um, for new business. We move into our committee, finally, our committee liaison updates reports. Uh, we haven't had those in a little bit, so, uh, let's go through them. First off, it's, um, Commissioner Marley, what, he'll start off with the committee reports.
Thank you, Mayor. They've been, but they've been doing a lot. Uh, the main thing at the last meeting was the budget concerns. Also, they are working on the, um, historic district, updating the historic district, um, for the town. Um, but mainly, mainly that's, that's where we're at. They got the Christmas coming up, um, and Charter Day will be their next big project.
Commissioner Craver.
Mainly, all my homeless, homelessness advisory committee did at their last meeting was, um, just cover plans, additional plans for what Kenny came up here and presented to the board. And, um, they're almost ready to get, they're doing the last paperwork to get their 501(c)(3). Um, they have partnered, uh, with Wood Furniture, who is going to provide, didn't they say, the mattresses and beds or whatever, for whatever we need that for, and several other businesses that they are also working with that will, uh, buy into them. They're doing a lot, and I'm really proud of them, so right now that's all that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Skorola is going to cover hers, and she's gonna cover the Appearance Commission as well.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll start with the Appearance Commission first. Um, so we've been working on the, uh, to paint the electrical boxes to kind of beautify the area, especially the one at the lake, because it's just, it's brown, it's tacky, it stands out, and when we put the Christmas tree, it's just like, uh, but anyways, I digress. Um, so I had seen the, uh, the drawing that the artist, um, like the, the rendering of what he plans to do to start off this, um, electrical box, uh, painting, and, uh, it's, uh, it's gonna have, incorporate some of the town elements, so it's not gonna be ducks or anything, it's actually gonna have town elements incorporated into that. Um, I'll see if I can get the, uh, maybe one of the future meetings, um, the actual picture of what is proposed to be put onto it. Um, then also, the, um, the Appearance Commission wanted to do a smaller scale, um, Field of Honor, kind of how like Fayetteville does theirs. Um, they were able to get donated ten, um, three-by-five flags. I was going to, um, make the flag poles and see if we can, um, uh, actually put them in place over by where the, uh, the flag pole is at the lake park. So there's that area between where the ditch is, kind of, and right behind the, um, advertisement house building. Um, but we're looking just to put ten flag poles out there. Um, there's gonna be more, it's, we're starting small, because we, we don't have many, you know, funds to contribute to that, and the flag poles themselves, to make sure they're durable, they're gonna be made of steel, so, um, I'll wind up eating some of that cost because I, I can make them myself, but, um, we're gonna start small, and I think eventually we're gonna see about maybe doing the way Fayetteville does theirs of, you know, looking for people who wanna nominate someone, so they can actually purchase the flag and such and so, so forth. So, um, those are some of the things that we're looking at right now for Appearance Commission. Um, let's see, Cumberland County Air Quality Ambassador's Committee. So, um, currently, so the Air Quality, um, Committee at one point was gonna seek getting these air quality, um, monitoring stations, uh, essentially leased to different elements, municipalities and what have you. Um, there was not much engagement throughout the county, so the, um, the leasing has gone, um, they're, they're not gonna move forward with leasing them out. Um, Hope Mills does currently have one station, it's somewhere over, um, over by the lake. It's a privately owned one, however, we can still pull up the, uh, website and see the air quality data, so it's still helpful. Um, one of the stipulations to have this air monitoring station is it would have to be outside, it would have to have internet connected to it, and it would have to have full-time power, so it's a little bit of an issue, and that's why it's easy to see it off a citizen's property, because they have it directly connected to their Wi-Fi, so we can get that data. Um, we can always seek to have our own in the future, but we do have at least some data given to us. Um, let's see, so for the FAMPO, um, the Transportation Advisory Committee, um, our last meeting was very, very short, due to the understanding that we do have elections going on, um, we really didn't want to have too much discussion with the effect that Fayetteville and, well, all the Cumberland County municipalities are having elections, so we don't know who's gonna still remain on our committee. So we, um, are holding off any, any kind of action until, I believe, November sixteenth is our next meeting, so more to follow. Um, let's see, Chamber of Commerce Liaison. So as we had spoken, uh, about before, the Chili Cook-Off, magically delicious. Do you have what it takes to beat me in the Chili Cook-Off? Probably, because I'm not that great of a cook. Um, let's see, we have the Business Breakfast, that's a great opportunity for anyone that has a small business, and not even just small businesses, anyone that has any kind of business, even if it's, um, a franchise of any kind. Um, but essentially, we meet at the Harmony of Hope Mills, they serve a, you know, delicious breakfast, and you get to network and meet other people within the community that you may be able to partner with. So that's a great opportunity for networking. And then, as we talked about briefly before, was the monthly luncheons. Um, it's now open to the public, so before you had to be a member to, to be a part of these luncheons, you do not have to be a member of the public. Um, the cost, I believe, is, um, I believe it's ten dollars for the luncheon, it depends on the location, because if we have it at, like, say Samio's, sometimes you just may have to pay for your meal. But if you have it, like, at the VFW, it's ten dollars, and then you get the meal that they have, and it's usually, it's spaghetti. And the VFW actually has the next one coming up. Um, if anybody has any questions, comments, hopes, fears, concerns, uh, by all means, I'm available for questions, and that is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Skorola. Next is Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I will start with my Cultural Arts Committee, and they are working on, or we are working on, the Charter, uh, the Charter Day, which is scheduled for March fourteenth, celebrating one hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary of Hope Mills, and of course, that's in conjunction with, um, the Parks and Rec and the Historic Commission. And, uh, as you all know, we've talked about this several times, we, the grant was submitted, um, to go on the side of the Parks and Rec building, very big project, and the only thing we do is wait and hope that we are approved for the grant. But I do want to support the artist that has worked with us on that project. Her name is Mara Trice, and she is gonna have an exhibit at the Arts Council from November twenty-first to, uh, December nineteenth, and it's called "It All Makes Sense Eventually." And I just want to say that she's worked very hard with us to submit things for this grant without the guarantee that we'll even get it, and so I think that's very rare to get someone to work with you all. So if you can support Mara, that would be excellent. Um, Prime Movers, they are, of course, getting ready, like everybody else, to participate in trunk or treat. We've also worked on a scholarship, uh, for Southview High School students. Uh, I talked to Dan, and I've talked to the finance, I'm ready to make sure that they're able to do that, but we've also changed the bylaws of the committee so that, um, sixteen-year-olds now can serve on our committee. And the reason why we're doing that is we're trying to bridge young people that are in high school, we want to, uh, encourage them to participate in their community, participate in, um, committees within the town, and they can have an opportunity to earn a scholarship. But there, you know, there's certain things they have to do, like public community service, a certain amount of hours, and things of that nature. So, uh, we've been pretty busy with our, our attorney, so I kind of paused on that, but, uh, we've already, it's pretty much already written out, and the principal has approved it and agreed that they will, uh, Southview has agreed that they'll work with us, because that's our only, that is our only, um, high school that's in the city limits of Hope Mills, so that is the school that we decided to focus on, and they are, uh, also working on having, like, a workshop for young people at the Hope Mills Library, like a series, starting, uh, in October, that will highlight, like, specific things, like one of them might be finances and different things of that nature. And Economic Development Committee, we are, we, we meet every three months, and so we're not scheduled to meet again until the month of November. That's all that I have.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray. I'm last. I will talk first about Parks and Rec, they continue to meet every month, the last Monday of the month. Eight pages now of minutes, and the Chair, Mark Hess, is sitting here tonight. Eight pages of minutes from the Parks and Rec Committee meetings. A lot of that covers, um, Heritage Park Phase Two. We're looking for public input for the lake improvements down at the lake. It also led to, uh, several partnerships that was approved by the board for the TJ Robertson Life Center agreements. Life Center agreements. When you go through and you look at everything that our Parks and Rec is involved in with programs and functions, that, that highlight and support families and our youth in Hope Mills area, that's what you get when you look at eight pages of everything that comes out of Parks and Rec. It is huge of what services our Parks and Rec Department is providing our, uh, our youth, seniors, and adults here in Hope Mills. And my hat's off to the committee and Chair Marquez, who, uh, who continues to steer that committee. Uh, Mayor's Coalition, we last met in August eighth at the city. It's a quarterly meeting that we have between all the municipalities. And our next one, believe it or not, will be here in Hope Mills, November seventh. And, uh, and our clerk, our town clerk, is the clerk for Mayor's Coalition, and that's Ashley Wyatt. So, November seventh, that'll be after the, uh, general election. Uh, that'll probably be the last time a lot of the mayors, depending on how the election comes out, uh, be for this wrap-up year as we look forward into the next year. So those are the two big ones. For, and that concludes us for committee reports. Reminders, I got a couple reminders that, that I just want to throw out before we get to staff comments. Uh, the next Parks and Rec Committee, of course, is going to be October twenty-seventh. That's at six-thirty. All of these are open to the public, down at the Tom, Thomas Oatman Chapel. Uh, that's on a Monday night. Tuesday night, October twenty-eighth, is the Cultural Arts Committee at the chapel at six-thirty. And then, of course, we'll be back. Our next regular board meeting will be Monday night before the general election, November third. Now, there's going to be a, and it's not public yet, but it will be, there's going to be a special meeting at six on November third. It's going to be a recognition meeting. I'll, I'll just say that. It's going to be a special meeting, and Ashley will be putting that out on the Sunshine List of what, of what that event's going to look like on, uh, on November third at six. Before we go tonight, our next meeting this week will be a special meeting on Wednesday, October twenty-second, at five PM in this boardroom. It's for this purpose. We'll have a closed session called pursuant to Attorney Client Privilege Personnel. That's Item One. Item Two will be Attorney Mac McLaren for a, uh, update and a investigation report about the investigation that he conducted. So that will be Wednesday in this room at five PM. So that's happening this week, and official action may be taken. So I just wanted to read that and let everybody know that, in the spirit of transparency, that everyone knows that that's a next meeting this week, and then I don't see anything before November third.
What day did you see your Mayor's Coalition meeting?
It's going to be November seventh. And that's open to the public, too. Now, before we go, I want to, I want to walk back and say, please, if you weren't here for the six, make sure that you look at the Strategic Plan Final Presentation. It, it is a very, very well-researched, very documented presentation by Ashley Anderson. Our Viewpoint Discover American Series Hope Mills video will be posted as well, the full video. I don't have, and I've had some questions, when is this going to be viewed on Fox Business? Because that's the first platform of exactly where it's going to come out. Uh, and then PBS is going to show the entire video, or snippets, not, not the entire thing, but a snippet part. Chancellor?
Oh, Fox Business should be this week, uh, PBS this week. Um, I think it's hitting CNN, ABC, and a couple other affiliates. Um, and I think they sent it to about a hundred and twenty markets, so it's not going to just air once. It's going to continue to air for quite some time. But if you, uh, were not present at the six o'clock, it is on our website. If you watched the Strategic Plan Presentation on our Facebook page, it's the last six minutes of that. We'll post the official video by itself tomorrow. But that video is almost like a branding tool, um, for businesses, residents, industries that are interested in coming to Hope Mills. It does talk about, one thing that we have always talked about is, as we grow, we need to make sure we are cognizant of the small-town character that makes Hope Mills what it is. And I think that's what that video outlines. And so it is something that is going to be on the news, uh, for quite some time.
My family saw it in New Jersey over the weekend.
Oh, cool.
In New Jersey. So I, I would say that for the record, our, um, police chief said his family saw it in New Jersey over the weekend. So that is something, it's almost like an advertisement of the town and all the things that we do have to offer on behalf of Hope Mills.
We should name drop some businesses that we want to get in.
It shows who we are. Uh, it will eventually be posted and available on, uh, Viewpoint, and when you see that version, you'll see the actual introduction by Dennis Quaid. Uh, that's a piece that will be exclusive to the Viewpoint piece. He will introduce our town, and then we'll go right into the video, the one that you see here. I'm proud of, I'm proud of it. I'm proud of our staff. Uh, we did it all in one take, I think. And, uh, it shows who we are as a community. It really, really does, and that's the strength of that. Lastly, before I call for adjournment, I want to thank, uh, our Pastor Billy, uh, Parker for the, for the excellent invocation, sir. I'm so glad that you came and, and shared the opening prayer with us. Is there anything before we adjourn? Mayor Pro Tem, you got anything?
I do not.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
Second, we are adjourned until Wednesday at five.